And one guy buys the membership.
Hi, this is David.
Everybody else pays sixty-six dollars.
I see it's Andrew and, uh...
And everybody knows to log in and you can all log in at the same time.
The phone number?
So we get it for sixty-five dollars or seventy, sixty-eight dollars a year, whatever.
Do you want the phone number?
Either two or one, thank you.
Hmm?
Are you Andrew or are you the phone number?
Thursday they made it to six.
Oh, see, that company's, uh, McColl County's doing the same thing. Making their decisions. I would wait. I'd wait a little bit.
Thank you.
Stay there.
Andrew?
Just kill, they're killing everything.
Andrew?
Amy, not left. Yeah, I'm still content that's what they want. Destroy the economy and blame Trump. Soros and company, he's probably funding the majority of this.
Somebody has their mic on over here. It could, it was echoing.
Thank you, Ross. You, Michelle, make sure you're ready.
Yep, I'm ready. Do we want this door closed here so we don't hear outside chatter?
You're just gonna have to tell them to be quiet.
They're gonna have to be quiet if they keep...
Is it, as, as their, is it connectiony? Connectiony? Okay, thank you.
Should I tell them we're gonna get started?
Yes. Tell them to hold down the chatter. Please. All right, everyone have their microphones on. It is, uh, six thirty-four. And we will call this meeting to order. I'll call the meeting to order. My name is Rich Nagel. I'm mayor of Arlington and I'll preside at the meeting. I'm getting some feedback here a little bit. The time is six thirty-four on June first, the regular meeting of the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. And would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, roll call. Uh, councilmember Amrain.
Here.
Councilmember Hettlested.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Batchor.
Here.
Four members present. Councilmember Gilman will not be, uh, attending this meeting. Uh, also, uh, at the table is, uh, city administrator Newsom. And, uh, we do have Ross Arnison has called in, so he's available, uh, on the phone. And there are a number of people in the hall that will just participate as their, uh, time comes up. We are encouraging them to stay out there just to keep the, uh, social distancing. So with that in mind, uh, is there a motion to approve the agenda? Is there any additions or corrections to the agenda? Uh, I do have a few. Item, add item G on consent agenda, and that would be a drone permit.
For William Wheeler.
William, I'm sorry, William Wheeler. W H E E L E R.
You wanna go down to Jane and ask her? Thank you.
Uh, add item thirteen point one, which is a resolution thirty dash twenty twenty, dealing with the predatory offender ordinance. Was that it? Have I got all of them?
We have, uh, the two additions to purchase equipment from the police department.
Oh, yes, yeah. This was something that was sent out during the afternoon.
It was sent out earlier today.
Eighteen point one, approved denied payment to, uh, watch guard in the amount of sixty-one hundred and eighty dollars. And eighteen point two, approved denied payment to stalker, S T A L K E R, in the amount of two thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars. We'll go into more detail on that.
She's in there. She just texted me. She's still in there.
She just walked outside.
And then remove number twenty from the agenda.
And remove number twenty from the raceway request. Any other changes in the agenda? Hearing none, would someone, uh, care to enter motion?
Motion to approve the agenda with the additions and subtractions.
Second.
Was that Joe?
That was Joe. Motion by councilmember Batchor, second by councilmember Morgan to approve the agenda with the additions and with the deletion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Approval of the consent agenda this evening consists of the following items. A, approval of the bills. B, approval of the May eighteenth, twenty twenty workshop meetings. C, May eighteenth, twenty twenty council meetings. Item D, May twentieth, twenty twenty streets committee meeting, or minutes, I should say. Uh, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty employee relations slash personnel committee minutes. Item F, approved leave for Laura Gilman for, uh, council committee meetings during the month of June. And lastly, D, uh, approve of the drone permit from a William Wheeler, W H E E L E R.
Is there any information on that drone thing?
What would you like to...
I passed out a couple of copies.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Is Excel energy transmission on related, so?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by councilmember Batchor, second by councilmember Morgan to approve the consent agenda as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion, um, oppose, no. Motion carried. Item five, addressing the council. Is there anyone here or in the hall wishes to address the council?
Nobody out here, though.
I'll go first. Mine's easy.
Okay, Amy, before you sit down, I do want to let you know.
I read it.
No, uh, you read what?
That out there?
I don't know what's out there, but...
Oh, yeah, that.
Okay. Uh, going forward, I, as mayor, have decided to allow individuals who wish to address the council at the time in the meeting agenda, which is now. Item one, their comments already, if their comments already have been heard by the council, I'm not going to allow any more comments like that. And number two, if comments or complaints deal with a new subject, the individual would first have to had make direct contact with either the subject of the complaint, the city administrator, or both, in an attempt to resolve the issue.
Mine's in accordance with that.
So you have talked to, you have talked to the business owner?
This isn't, this isn't, yeah, I was, I was given this by them. This is just an announcement that they asked me to, like...
Okay.
You're not using it? Can we touch it?
We're fine.
That's all it is.
Okay, she's green. Yep.
I know, but yours is too, so it's yours, so for that time, maybe we want to...
Go ahead, Amy.
Um, these flyers are going up all over town. There's some, um, miscommunication by some people in town, um, that are not understanding that the surgery clinics are now all open except toward Henderson. The winter clinic and their new hours are all on the flyers.
Yeah.
They just started hanging up and up around. Um, I think they started to alert today and quite a few people who didn't know the information, so, um, being that I have some friends that work at the hospital or, you know, whatever they brought to me, knew I was coming tonight because of the other stuff on the agenda, asked me to bring one and just leave it here for you guys and then maybe Amy can hang it up.
I was gonna say, can I have that?
Yes, if you can hang it in the entries for the hospital, that would be great.
Okay.
That's all I can say.
Thank you, Amy. Is there anyone else out there? I've, oh, I've got something to read to you, too.
I heard ya.
You did you?
I did.
Okay.
This is, I was vocal Arlington and...
Has the council heard this, these comments before?
No, um...
Okay, I will decide if they have and I will ask you to stop if they do.
Okay, um, I did put in a request for data. Um, I also have spoken to the attorney general's office and the Department of Health regarding the trailer park. Um, on the April twentieth meeting, it surprised me to find out that that is actually a zoned industrial. That is the city's responsibility to enforce that zoning ordinance. There's a lot of residents down in those worn-out trailers right now, a lot. Um, basically what you're allowing to happen is against the law.
We are aware of that. We are aware of that. We are addressing it.
Okay. I, I guess I'm trying to figure out, if this meeting was on April twentieth, when you all, if you didn't already know, were informed it's zoned industrial and no one's supposed to be living there, why are we sitting here on June first and there's residents down in those trailers?
Yeah.
Because that needs, uh, re, uh, variance, that needs a public hearing to rezone, all of that. So I haven't seen that on any agenda. So right now, the city is technically breaking its own law.
Could you sit down and visit with city administrator Newsom about this, so that you can voice your...
I, I could, but it's really not gonna change the fact that you're still violating the law right now by letting those residents live in those trailers. So I just wanted that to be known because technically if the residents would like to take the city to court over this issue,
Okay.
I was told by the attorney general's office that we could do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Okay, uh, moving on to announcements.
I just have one, community cleanup day, June eighteenth, nine AM to four PM at the fairgrounds. We will have dumpsters there for residents free of charge to throw your garbage in.
Was there anybody else out there?
I, I don't know. Is there?
Was there anybody else here that wanted to say something and address all the comments?
I think they're all on the agenda.
You're on the agenda. Everybody's on the agenda.
Okay, okay, that's...
Okay, so we're good.
Yep.
We're on this a little bit.
Okay. Cleanup day was my only thing, June nineteenth.
Is your mic on, Amy?
It is, but I have it pointed at the computer so we can hear.
Okay, okay, got it, got it.
Those folks.
All right, any questions on the cleanup day? Moving on to communications, item number seven.
Summary of appeals and copy of the record from the twenty twenty Open Book Board of Appeal and Negotiation from Civil County was included in your packet. We had one appeal and that information is in the packet. Also, the tax collections through May twentieth I received and they're looking good. I, I was pleased with it. I don't know if you have any questions, comments, concerns about it, but I was pleased with it.
Our citizens are doing a good job.
I agree.
I was surprised they were only look like they were off a lot of percent percent enough in the last...
Correct, but it looks good. And then the last thing I had was the public comment from the last MMPA meeting that I attended. Pretty brief, struggling too due to COVID nineteen.
Okay, any questions on the communications? Hearing met, none, we will move on to reports, uh, people's service, April, um, O and M report.
Operation and maintenance report.
Maintenance, that's what it is.
I have no other comments about it. It's included in your packet. If you have any questions, let me know and I'll give that feedback back to the OR law.
Okay, any one?
When is our next meeting for the, um, AGI?
September.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions regarding people's service report? If not, um, item B, public works update, Kirby Wickworth, is he out there?
Kirby is on Ring Central. Kirby?
Yeah, Simon, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, so, maintenance update, um, just, uh, getting into full gear or full, yeah, we're getting going full-time on summer stuff. Working in the parks, got some tree work done. Uh, we installed fall poles today at the sportsman's park down the left field and right field line, um, wheat spraying, um, a lot of painting in the parks. Uh, some grass seeding that we're trying to keep up on and get that established. Monthly building inspections were done last month. Everything's going good with that. Yeah, just a lot of general upkeep, pretty much, really, uh, working, um, CIP work, getting that to Amy. That's kind of the gist of it. If there's any questions or comments or...
How's the payloader repair coming?
Oh, the payloader is back and in full service again.
Okay.
So we got that back, I think, at the beginning of last week. And, uh, yeah, it's, it's working, working well, so.
Good. Um, how about management of the dump site? I know there's a lot of stuff been brought out there this spring.
Yeah, we were wanting to burn that, um, was it last week, but the wind wasn't right and, uh, now we're waiting for the right wind. It's been these hard south winds now. I hate to smoke people out, but waiting for a north wind to get that burned and allow more room out there.
Um, maintenance of the, uh, of the compost pile, I see that, you know, what, what looks like a black dirt pile is actually, uh, compost, is it not?
It is. We've been, probably doesn't look like it, but we've been loading quite a few people up with compost lately.
Okay, good.
We're chipping away at it.
Yep.
Uh, gonna probably have to seek out some options maybe to get rid of it, you know, all of it at some point. So we have room for the next batch, so.
Good, sounds good.
How does that work? Are people able to go and grab some of that themselves or?
Yeah.
How about the wood chips?
Yep, everything's free for the taking to Arlington residents. Yep.
We put that, I, I'm pretty sure I had Jane put that in the last newsletter. Well, I hope it was in there. We try to remind people that, you know, they, this time of year, it's, they're free to have whatever they need out there.
Maybe it'd be a good idea to put a sign out there for residents so that they're aware when they do go up there.
Did you hear that, Kirby?
Well, there's, there's a big sign there stating that.
Oh, okay.
No, I know there's times you can get really good wood chips there, um, without any leaves in or anything like that, so.
There are some good wood chips, yeah, definitely.
That, uh, that really large tree that was taken down, was that, uh, was that, that the city's doing or was that the owner, homeowner doing that?
No, it's the city's.
Nope, that was the city's. That was us.
Okay.
We've been lying that up for the last couple of years. Finally pulled the trigger on it this year. And I wish I had the pictures in front of you right now because it, it was a good call. It was really rotten inside.
I have, I can forward them to you.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
The, the limbs on it, and there was a lot of them, were about the size of medium ash trees themselves. And if those would've came down on a busy intersection, it could've been a bad deal.
Did someone local take the, uh, take the wood, the, uh, the logs, I should say, or the usable wood?
Yes, yeah, we were able to get rid of the, the logs, yep.
Good. All right, any questions for Kirby? Kirby, are you gonna need any help at the, uh, citywide cleanup day? As far as just monitoring what gets thrown on the large dumpsters by city residents?
I, I think usually, you know, Mike and I, Mike's there for sure all day and I keep popping in and out too, uh...
Okay.
Eye on it.
If you're short, give me a call.
Okay.
All right, any other questions for Kirby? Thanks, Kirby.
Thank you.
All right, ordinances and resolutions.
Rich, do you want me to read this first one?
Sure.
You don't have to read too.
Sure, go ahead. I'll read the second one then.
We have the second reading of ordinance number three twenty-eight, which is restrictions on the residency of predatory offenders within city limits. Subdivision one, findings and intent. It is the intent of this article to serve the city's compelling interest to promote, protect, and improve the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of the city by creating areas around location where children regularly congregate in concentrated numbers wherein certain sexual offenders and sexual predators are prohibited from establishing temporary or permanent residence. Subdivision two, definitions. Designated under means any person who is a risk level three predatory sex offender as defined by Minnesota statute two four four point oh five two. Permanent residence means a place where the person abides, lodges, or resides for fourteen or more consecutive days. Temporary residence means a place where the person abides, lodges, or resides for a period of fourteen or more days in the aggregate during any calendar year and which is not for the person's permanent interests, or a place where the person routinely abides, lodges, or resides for a period of four or more consecutive or non-consecutive days in a month, which is not the person's permanent residence. Subdivision three, sexual predator residence prohibitions, prohibited location of residence. It is unlawful for any designated offender to establish a permanent residence or temporary residence within two thousand feet of any school, licensed daycare center, park, ballpark, public trail, or playground, or within a thousand feet of any designated public school bus stop, place of worship which provides regular educational programs like Sunday School, or other places where children are known to congregate. Prohibited activity. It is unlawful for any designated offender to participate in a holiday event involving children under eighteen years of age, such as distributing candy or other items to children on Halloween, wearing a Santa Claus costume, or proceeding, on or proceeding Christmas, or wearing an Easter bunny costume on or proceeding Easter. Holiday events in which the offender is the parent or guardian of the children involved, and no non-familial children are present except from this paragraph. Measurement of distance. For the purposes of determining the minimum distance separation, the requirement shall be measured by following a straight line from the outer property line of the permanent residence or temporary residence of the designated offender to the nearest outer property line of, of a school, designated public school bus stop, daycare center, park, playground, place of worship, or other place where children regularly congregate. Subdivision five, exceptions. A designated offender residing within the prohibited area as described in this section does not commit a violation of this section if any of the following apply. The person was a minor when he or she committed the offense and was not convicted as an adult. The person is a minor. The school, designated public school, bus stop, or daycare center within two thousand feet of the person's permanent residence was opened after the person established the permanent residence or temporary residence, and reported and registered the residence pursuant to Minnesota statute two forty-three point one sixty-six or two forty-three point one sixty-seven. The residence is also the primary residence of the person's parents, grandparents, siblings, spouse, or children. Subdivision six, property owners prohibited from renting property to certain sexual offenders. It is unlawful to let or rent any place, structure, or part thereof, mobile home, trailer, or other covenants with the knowledge that it be used as a permanent residence or temporary residence by any person prohibited from establishing such permanent residence or temporary residence pursuant to this section. If such place, structure, or part thereof, mobile home, trailer, or other covenants is located in a prohibited location zone described in this section. If a property owner discovers or is informed that a tenant is a designated offender after signing a lease, otherwise agreeing to let the offender reside on the property, the owner of the property manager must evict the offender. Subdivision seven, violations and penalties. Any violation of this section shall be subject to the penalties and enforcement actions under city code, chapter thirty-one, section twenty-eight. This ordinance becomes effective immediately on publication, and publication will be Thursday in the Arlington enterprise.
Okay, this is the second reading then of ordinance number three twenty-eight. Uh, there will be a resolution a little later dealing with, or, uh, moving the ordinance forward or giving it final approval. Any questions on the ordinance at this point? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinance, uh, number three twenty-nine. Do we want them to, anybody to speak before I read it or after? I know Matt's out there. Should I read it before?
Or do you want to read it and then have him respond to it? Why don't we do that?
Okay, I'll read it first. Okay, I'm gonna read ordinance three twenty-nine first, and then I will invite a response from whoever. Ordinance three twenty-nine, an ordinance temporarily allowing outdoor dining. Finding and purpose. Business, businesses in Arlington affected by the shutdown due to COVID nineteen are looking to utilize the city-owned sidewalks in connection with these, with these businesses and alleyways for purposes to serve food and beverages, including alcohol, providing said businesses holds a valid sales, uh, liquor license until the indoor bar and restaurant restrictions are lifted to a minimum of seventy-five percent capacity. The city of Ar, city of Arlington, Minnesota ordains: One, the ordinance shall remain in order until no later than October fifteenth, twenty twenty, or until this ordinance is terminated earlier. Two, all safety guidelines need to be followed in accordance with Centers for Disease Control, CDC, and Minnesota Department of Health, MDH, guidelines. Three, a liquor licensee which serves food and alcohol shall be allowed to apply for the city, for, to the city for permission to conduct outdoor dining and beverage service in the form of an outdoor space to include city-authorized portions of city sidewalks or alleyways under, under procedures set out below. The city of Arlington temporarily waives the restriction contained in city code section eight point five regarding the prohibition against consumption of liquor or public, on public streets, sidewalks, or alleys. Guidelines to be set in place must include the following requirements. Item A, permission for the licensee may be suspended by the city administrator when necessary to clear the sidewalk or street for repair, improvements, public safety, special events, or any other reason deemed necessary by the city administrator in his or her sole discretion. Item B, the serving and consumption of beverage, alcohol, on city sidewalk or street is permitted if the applicant holds a valid liquor license in good standing with both the city and the state. If a liquor license is revoked or suspended, the applicant shall no longer serve beverage, alcohol in the outdoor space. C, the outdoor space shall be roped off or otherwise demarcated as such by the, the business owner as approved by the city administrator. No outdoor space shall encroach upon the property of another business or resident. In terms of the area to be encompassed by the cafe regarding the city sidewalk, a business shall only be entitled to occupy that sidewalk's front footage as measured parallel to the business's respective property lines. If the cafe occupies a portion of the city street, it shall adhere to any regulations set forth by the city council hereafter. Item D, tables, chairs, umbrellas, and any other objects in the space shall be cleaned, maintained, and have an attractive appearance and shall always be kept in safe and good repair. E, beverage alcohol to be served in the space must remain in the space. All beverage alcohol must be served in either a plastic or aluminum container. F, all beverage alcohol service hours of operation on city property will cease by ten PM Sunday through eleven PM on Friday and Saturday. Item G, the applicant must ensure and take measures to that no wastepaper, trash, garbage, or other debris or material leaves the outer, outdoor space. H, the applicant shall ensure that the patrons of the permitted space do not become disorderly or otherwise disturb the peace of the residents of the city of Arlington. And lastly, item I, the applicant is prohibited from installing a loudspeaker, public address system, radio, television, amplifier, or any other sound emitting device which emits sounds in the cafe that can be heard fifty feet away from the licensee. Item number four, an applicant, uh, not adhering to the regulations set forth herein may have their outdoor space privileges revoked or suspended by the city administrator as deemed necessary or his or her role, or at his or her role, or sole, I'm sorry, sole discretion. In the event of suspension of revoke, or revocation, an aggrieved applicant may appeal and, uh, set a spend, said suspension or revocation to the city council. No application has any property right to occupy city sidewalks or street and the city in operate, in opening its sidewalks and streets to outdoor space, outdoor space... Outdoor space is simply trying to be creative in encouraging economic achievement or activity, I should say, as balanced against the interest of ensuring minimal public nuisance, blight, or disorderly conduct. Item five, any person who violates any provision of this ordinance shall upon conviction be punished by a fine of not more than $300. Item six, the ordinance becomes effective from and after its passage and publication. That is the first reading of ordinance 329. I would invite any input at this time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Matt Nelson, Arlington Area Chamber of Commerce President. Some of the our local businesses, our bars and restaurants.
A little closer.
How's that? Is that better?
Yeah.
All right. They've they've reached out to me and we've been in discussion on as soon as the governor came out and said, you know, June 1st, you can, our bars and restaurants can be open, and then it was outside. None of our bars and restaurants have outdoor patio space that makes it feasible for them. I know that Administrator Newsome put together in your guys' packet, something that I put together along with the bar and restaurant owners requesting, you know, certain areas for each establishment. Some of those areas, and laid out in that ordinance, it talks about sidewalks and alleyways. I did not hear street parking spots. There's some places that we definitely want to make sure we have street parking spots. The Arlington House alongside, is that Second Avenue? Alongside there, she's got four parking spots on that side. We'd like to see those where those could be roped off. Now Denise wasn't able to be here tonight, but she trusted me to talk about the Arlington House. She doesn't know yet if she's going to open completely, partially because she doesn't know if it's going to be feasible with extra costs. One of the things that she's looking at doing is still allowing, still, obviously, they're all going to allow the the takeout still to happen, but a place for people to come there, order the takeout, sit down, have a beverage while they wait for their takeout, and then get it. Another spot is La Vita, the Hispanic restaurant. There's three parking spots that we want to utilize there. That's on Third Avenue. Right now, they, for that side of the building, there's not a whole lot of space on that sidewalk for tables. So we want to be able to utilize the the parking spots as well. I think those were the things that were that I didn't hear in the ordinance that I'd like to have added. One of the things in particular, everybody knows where, you know, we're all from here. We all have a vested interest in our businesses. With our businesses, with our bars and restaurants, being able to actually have people, we're all sick of grabbing food and going home or eating it in the car. To be able to have a place to sit down and have a burger, have a pizza, have whatever, taco, you know, whatever it is that they're getting, that keeps people here in town, and that helps our other businesses as well. One of the things that I did not put in here, but I'd like the council to consider, is the city part, the city-owned parking lot on Main Street, roping off a section of that, whether it's a third of it or half of it, and having it as a seating area for these other establishments if the reservations are busy and people can still get a to-go order, and we can still have them sit and eat in Main Street, Arlington, so they're still downtown, which is going to benefit our other restaurants as well, our other restaurants or other businesses as well. So I'd like the council to consider that. One of the things that I'm not crazy about is the process of adapting an ordinance. Other towns, other have allowed their businesses to open up today. It wasn't an option for our businesses here in Arlington. Going with the ordinance route, it needs to have a second reading, so even if you guys do a special meeting, then it will get in the paper. It won't get into the paper until next week, which would mean that they wouldn't be able to open up until the end of next week. That makes our local businesses wait an extra two weeks longer than all the other bars and restaurants. I don't think that's fair. Something that I would like the council to put into consideration is rather than an ordinance, pass a resolution. Resolutions, per the legal Minnesota cities, resolutions are for temporary. That's what this is. This is a temporary situation. We're not expecting that this is going to be, you know, yearly or, you know, long term. Or if you guys still feel that it should be an ordinance, I ask that you guys, I ask that you guys waive the normal, suspend the normal rules of the two readings and the running in the paper to make and make the ordinance effective immediately. You can still have your second reading, still run in the paper, but make it effective immediately.
Attorney Arnison?
Yes.
I don't know how much of what Matt said you heard, but could you speak to that?
Well, as I explained to Matt on the phone last week, since our city code has a provision that prohibits alcohol consumption in public places, such as sidewalks, streets, and so on, we need to have an ordinance to override an ordinance. Now, that has to do with alcohol consumption. Service of food on city property can certainly be done by resolution. So for example, there's a restaurant that doesn't have a liquor license, it would just take a city resolution to authorize them to use city sidewalk or parking spaces on the street for food service. That can be done by resolution, but in order to override our ordinance prohibition against liquor consumption in public places, we have to do it by ordinance. And I can't speak to what's going on in other towns, or, you know, what what kind of rules they have in their books. Each town is probably structured differently.
Are we able to waive the time period that Matt was talking about in the second reading?
The second reading and the publishing in the newspaper.
Well, that's a, that's an interesting question. I think that it's something that other towns have actually done on a permanent basis. For example, in Green Isle, there is only one reading, and then it's, the ordinance is considered active after publication. Now, if there's an ordinance that is controversial or requires more discussion, you know, it may go two or three or four meetings before it has an official first and final reading. But, you know, other towns have gone to that, where we shorten the process for the passing of an ordinance. As far as waiving the reading, the second reading, in a case like this, I suppose it could be done on a temporary basis, but I guess I would have to research that further. You know, I'm just talking off the top of my head as far as shortening the ordinance adoption process. I guess if the city, you know, the city can pass an emergency ordinance, we've talked about that in the past, but an emergency ordinance is typically in cases of natural disasters, and this doesn't qualify. So we can't go the emergency ordinance route. If the council wanted to temporarily suspend the rules for the passage of an ordinance in this particular case, I suppose there could be some argument in that direction because we're passing a temporary ordinance itself, you know, which will have an end date to it. So I guess, my specific answer to that question is I'm not sure. I suppose what the council can do is, you know, move forward with a resolution, shortening the ordinance process to just one reading and publication. And if I research it and find that that's not legal, well, then we're going to have to, you know, come back at a second meeting for the second reading.
Ross, if we were to temporarily suspend the rules and have a resolution be in effect tonight to open up these businesses and give them a chance to start tomorrow, that's something that we can do though, right? Temporary suspend our rules. It doesn't have to be published. After tonight, it can pass.
Oh, well, I don't think we can waive the requirement for publication. I, I think that's a state law. I think we can only waive a requirement for a second reading.
So in the emergency ordinance, does a pandemic constitute as an emergency?
Well, I guess if we were dealing with some issue directly involved in the pandemic, but, you know, what we're dealing with is some economic consequences, you know, of the of the pandemic. So it's not the emergency itself, you know, it's the economic consequences. And I really don't think we can declare this as an emergency ordinance.
Well, with the regulations that are put down because of the pandemic, the reason why they're not open is because of the pandemic.
Yes, but, but again, the emergency is the pandemic itself. And even there, I guess I'm not sure that, let's say if there was some local action to be taken for the pandemic, I'm not sure that in itself would be considered an emergency. Again, my understanding of the emergency is some kind of a natural disaster like a tornado.
So.
Or a flood.
So would it work if we did like an emergency ordinance because of the pandemic and let them open tomorrow, but then continue on changing our ordinance and have the second reading and then have that published? Kind of do it how we normally do it, but at least if we do this emergency thing, temporary, that they can open tomorrow? Is there any way? I mean, I guess it's up to us if there's any way. It's really not.
Yeah.
It's up to us if there's any way.
Well, the fact that the state.
Again, I guess, I guess, I guess the basic, well, there's two different issues. If the city council wants to authorize restaurants to conduct food service, you know, on city property, sidewalks, parking areas, the city can do that with a resolution, no question. The problem again is, we have an ordinance on the books saying no public consumption of alcohol. That means, you know, streets, sidewalks, whatever. And I, I'm not aware of any legal way that we can change that unless by ordinance. You know, you change an ordinance by an ordinance, or amend an ordinance by an ordinance. Resolutions are considered to be, you know, kind of a different animal. Those are typically for, you know, you know, situations that don't rise to the level of an ordinance.
Could we read it today and then have a meeting tomorrow and read it again tomorrow and then publish it? It's got to be a whole week.
No, three days.
I have, I have another possible solution.
Yes, that was something I had mentioned. I can't remember, I've talked to so many people about this, but I had mentioned that a second reading can certainly be at a special meeting. It doesn't have to be at a regular council meeting.
The problem with that is it's still going to be next week before they open.
Right.
It's still going to drag it out. No matter what we do, we have a special meeting.
Can I ask Ross a question?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Ross, per Minnesota, per Arlington city code 8.05, consumption in public places, the city council may at its own discretion make exceptions to this section for special events sponsored by the city or city organizations. What if for the next, until that, until that, until it's ran in the paper, what if we have Arlington diner days or Arlington COVID days? I, you know, it, it allows the city to grant the use of alcohol until that reading, or until that thing is printed.
Well, you know, I guess, you know, it's up to the council, you know, how much it wants to bend, you know, the rules. You know, again, that, that section was designed to cover actual city celebrations like Arla Dazzle, you know, a confined event, you know, that involved the entire city. And clearly, what we're talking about is not a citywide celebration. You know, we're talking about.
As the chamber president, I'd argue that fact.
Liquor licensees, you know, being able to serve out on the sidewalk. Now, could the city, you know, as you suggested, you know, call a, you know, a COVID night out or something? Yeah, but, you know, could we claim that that's covering just, you know, routine alcohol service on the sidewalk, you know, for the next month or two months or whatever? No, I think that would be bending it too far.
But a week or two would be probably fine.
But, but I, but I think, I think we found a couple.
Well, and, you know, they, again, that, that ordinance speaks to a city celebration. So the city would have to be involved somehow in sponsoring it or supporting it.
We utilize city picnic tables.
You know, and I suppose it could involve, you know, a city, you know, advertising for, you know, the event or something, and, you know, maybe tie in not just, not just liquor licensees, but, you know, other businesses in town. I'm not sure what the potential for that would be, but I guess the more you make it look like a citywide celebration, the, the more it would fit under that exception of
I guess we could call it the tour of businesses. Each day you stop at a different spot and check them out.
Before you guys make any decisions, I do know that there is some business owners that would like to address you guys.
Okay.
Any other questions for me?
Nope. Thanks, man.
Can I, can I ask Attorney Arnison one question? Ross, is the city liable in any way if they're serving alcohol on the street? Let's say someone's driving down Main Street to the east, they take a left by the Arlington House, and someone's sitting there drinking or standing 10 feet away and they get hit by a car. Where does the liability fall, since we're allowing this?
Well, part of this is, and this is, this comes from, you know, the state regulations, Liquor Control Commission and so on. The, if, if the liquor licensee is allowed to expand their liquor service out beyond their original licensed establishment, in other words, out onto a city sidewalk, they have to prove that their gram shop insurance continues to cover that extra area. So, you know, they would have to demonstrate they have the insurance coverage to the city. And I think if there was some incident, some liability exposure, it would go to their gram shop insurance.
Thank you.
Somebody wish to speak in regard to this?
I just have a question as far as the ordinance.
Use, use the microphone, please, Matt.
Matt Carney with the dugout. Just with the ordinance and the resolution possibility of going to a single reading and publication, isn't the posting of it at the city offices or on the website considered publication?
No, it has to be in the newspaper.
Is that this city's ordinance or is that the state?
That's a state.
Okay, well, I guess that was my suggestion for a way to get around this, but why wasn't this acted on on the 20th when we knew this was going to be a situation? Why did? Why did we wait till June first to have this meeting? Many other towns had meetings, emergency meetings, special meetings to get this stuff figured out before today. But we sat idle and didn't do anything. And I think we're owed an explanation of why that is, why we waited.
I received information about it last week.
You don't watch the news when the governor came on and said on the twentieth, it's open now?
No, information from business owners and the request from Matt to put it on the agenda.
It should have been, you guys should have taken it upon yourselves and make a special meeting to address this. You're the leaders of this town, not me. You know, it just, it's frustrating to see the idle, the way this city has been run for years. It's been an uphill battle, you know? We've made a special request to Ross Arneson for La Volita to use his space, which is not a city's space. They could be there today. He declined that. I don't know why he would do that. To help a local business, he says no to them. To serve food in a space, he doesn't use for anything but dumpster storage.
I, I did, I reached out, I was talking to some businesses, not all of them.
Yes, surely.
I reached out and I talked to you guys and I, and I said, come with, come to us with a plan. And we had long conversations about what I thought could fly and what I thought probably wouldn't fly. And I've been talking with the administrator ever since the governor made his decision. And I'm pushing for you guys to open as soon as possible or whatever. We didn't get the information from Matt until late last week, as far as what you guys were requesting.
And I guess I-
And, I mean, like I said, I mean, I, I've been, I've been trying.
And I do appreciate that, yes, you have to.
I've been trying.
We went through-
Other cities though have had, the day after shock be published, their businesses didn't have to come to them. They came and said, you guys can use our city streets, green spaces, whatever you guys need. They took it upon themselves, they didn't wait for the businesses to come to request things. They saw what the rules were and moved forward.
Well, I guess, we don't know what their liquor law is as far as publication, maybe they're allowed to-
I don't either, but they made whatever adjustments needed to be made at that time, they didn't wait.
I mean, if it were up to me, you'd be, you'd have your doors open?
The good thing is, it's up, it is up to you right now. You can now listen to Ross and you can approve whatever you guys want to approve, you are the city council.
I, you don't have to finish. I wouldn't have you serving alcohol outside, I'd have you serving it inside like you normally do.
Well, that would be great, but the governor is, yeah, handcuffing us on that.
It's not Arlington or Arlington City Council that's, that's closed your doors.
Right, and I understand that, but it's you guys that can help us to get open following the rules that we have to follow right now. So, I guess, with that being said, I'd hope you guys can come up with a solution so that we can get open sooner than two weeks. Every other town around us has figured it out, and they are open today. So, I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Do you have local towns that you have examples of? You said every other town on the list.
Winthrop, Fairfax are open right now, Bell Plain's open, they're all-
For example, Winthrop and Fairfax, what are they doing?
I guess I don't know their exact ordinances, but-
Winthrop doesn't have the restaurant, I believe, closed.
Tanger Bay is open. There's pictures of him, he has the whole street blocked off in front of his place, no offense.
Okay.
They shut the street down for him. Fairfax, the city is providing picnic tables on the main street out in front of the bars and restaurants for them. They, they've set it up for them. They said, we spaced the table six feet apart, but we took care of it. You guys are set to use them today. You know, I, I guess those are the two that I know specifically what they've done. Bell Plain, I know the bars over there are open today, outdoor dining, they had it set up, so, it can be done.
Not to make an excuse, but they may not be a charter city, so they fall under different rules than ours.
Okay.
I mean, there is a difference.
And I can respect that.
We still have to follow the law. I'm all for you guys doing what you need to do, but we still have to follow the law.
I guess that's where I, this shouldn't have talked about in a special meeting earlier then, because, you know, I guess, as just a business owner, I don't know all these city charts and codes and whatnot. We rely, rely on you guys for that, so. It'd be nice to get something going sooner or later, it's been a long, three months already, so.
Ross, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Uh, I heard about ten percent of those discussions, so I don't know what was being said. Was there a legal question?
Uh, Ross, this is Mayor Nagel. Um, isn't there some situation where state statute says that the property that is, uh, is, uh, expanded onto by an establishment has to be contiguous or owned by that business?
Yes, uh, that's under the state liquor laws.
Okay, so that, no matter what we do, we would have to follow that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, now, uh, it appears, uh, I, some of the information I saw in my research indicated that if, for example, the city wanted to turn the, uh, Main Street city parking lot into a, you know, a beer garden, uh, that could be done if the liquor licensee got a caterer's license. The caterer's license is considered more portable. But I realize there's a lot of hoops to jump through to get a caterer's license.
Matt Carney already has one.
Uh, you know, some kind of level of food service in order to qualify. But that's the only exception that I'm aware of, where a liquor licensee can, um, you know, go, uh, and, uh, you know, uh, transport part of their operation to a location that, uh, they don't own and that's not contiguous to their, uh, original licensed location.
Okay. Yes, uh, use a microphone, please, identify yourself.
Hi, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Kevin Tafe. I'm a concerned citizen of Arlington. I have recently made residence in your fine city. I look forward to contributing to the city in which my wife has grown up and lived all of her life. I do see that, in, in a little background, I come to you with ten years' experience of, as the mayor of Kill County, Minnesota, uh, recently stepping down from my post when I moved. So, I know the job that you are doing. I know how difficult it is to run a city. And I understand, from hearing the ordinance you've read tonight, you guys are trying, so thank you for that. I would ask you as a council, on behalf of these business owners out here, to consider an emergency meeting after tonight's meeting. COVID nineteen, the pandemic, has been, uh, given an emergency order by the governor. Okay, Sibley County has declared a state of emergency. So, therefore, it is not a natural disaster, but as far as I know, a virus, a pandemic, is a disaster. So, on behalf of these business members, I would ask you to please think about the community, about the people that employ your citizens, that allow a place for your citizens to socialize, and call that emergency meeting for your second reading. Then you do not need to change your ordinance right away. You can take the time it takes to do it properly within your city code, but show the good faith to these people who have stuck their neck out for your city for years and years and years. Do what you can do. It's in your hands. Mr. Arneson, I've heard him on the phone. I dealt with him last year when my wife's basement was flooded. Was told by him that there's really nothing the city can do, and you know what? I never did get a call from Mr. Mayor, that's okay. I just kept my mouth shut. But when you have businesses who are trying to bring people to your town, to make your town a better place, and you turn your back on them, it doesn't show people coming to your town that you're not gonna turn their back on them too. I plan to live here for a long time. Plan to send my kids to Sibley's schools. I plan to spend my hard-earned money at Arlington businesses. And I would really like to see a city government stand up for their community and not for the special interest of their city attorney, who, as I hear tonight, I think just doesn't want people to have a beer in Arlington. And that really, really bothers me. I ask you, council, do the right thing. Use your powers as the council. This is a statewide emergency. It is a Sibley County emergency, and you have emergency powers as the council to do the right thing. So, thank you. Please call that meeting, have your second reading of the ordinance, publish it, and let these people open. Let them make a living for themselves, and help me be proud of Arlington. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, council, uh-
We still have to have a posting time period, correct? We can't bypass that, can we? How many state laws can we break to do that?
By resolution, by resolution, right?
We can eliminate that, that's legal?
I mean, if we have a resolution for the pandemic or whatever, emergency resolution, right?
And are we breaking state laws when it's emergency? I mean, that's, it's accurate, it's state of emergency, so we call it as an emergency.
Absolutely.
And the emergency is that our businesses can't afford to be closed any longer.
Even if alcohol's involved.
It's a pandemic, I mean-
But I heard Ross say something totally, not totally different, but totally one.
Ross, can you just clarify something? Uh, can it be an emergency, can they have another meeting like tomorrow nights? And that it's an emergency meeting? What I'm hearing from Ross though is that we have to pass this as an ordinance, not a resolution. This, Tom is shaking his head, I'm hearing different things from council members. So, Ross, could we have an emergency meeting tomorrow night to have a second reading? And then still get it in the paper on Thursday?
Then you're pushing the law on Tuesday.
Well, I think you can only take an ordinance action at a, you know, a duly called council meeting, and based on the open meeting law requirements, I think it does require that three-day notice. So, I don't know any way around that.
One other, uh, thing that was brought up, um, the city-owned parking lot, so kinda right on the corner there, since, uh, the dugout has the catering license, and that seems to be the, um, the main presence here. I think some of the other businesses are, and I don't know if Matt would speak to that, but I think they're kinda maintaining, we're not so sure if, um, Arlington House is even gonna take part in it. What I heard rumor mill was tape, moving tables in and out that the, uh, you know, wasn't necessarily in their, their bill, but if we did something, I would personally prefer alcohol being in that parking lot rather than an alleyway that, you know, now we gotta block the thing off and prevent, you know, people from just driving down the street. If that's an option, um, doing it under a, a different fashion allows them to do sales in that lot. And I don't know if that's something that you guys are open to, I mean, it's, it's not right next door, but it's, you know, just a half a block away, I guess. Um, but that was something that was brought up as far as, uh, sales in a public, uh, public space.
But there would still need to be social distancing, that type of thing?
Oh, absolutely.
Or a maximum, maximum number of capacity?
What is it, maximum two hundred and fifty peo- people or?
Fifty, I think.
Well, it's two fifty for, like, the wedding, weddings and stuff, so we can marry somebody out there.
So, I mean, the only other way around it or whatever is doing like a, um, like, go ahead and do our ordinance how we do our ordinance, and let it take two and a half weeks, and then just have a proclamation or have a resolution that we're gonna do Arlington COVID days starting tomorrow, and that'll run for two weeks. And what it is, it's a tour of businesses in downtown Arlington, and then we just open it up. And that, we don't have to do with the, uh, emergency meeting, uh, temporary suspending any rules, anything like that. It's just done. Um, the city of Arlington can probably provide some picnic tables or something like that to different businesses to kinda-
He did also, Ross also did say that we could pass a resolution tonight, which we could pass a resolution without having drafted in front of you, but we could pass a resolution stating that we're cutting it down to one reading.
Right.
And that would, and then we'd run it in the paper on Thursday.
A resolution would suspend the rules for this ordinance only?
Yeah, and you could say that, you could now write it down and we'll pass it.
Does that open their doors tomorrow?
No.
No, it opens their doors on Thursday, when it-
Now, actually, not really to be open, we-
The publication date.
Not knowing when this was, we need to get product in yet, we need to get set, I mean, sooner the better, but I mean, if it is Thursday, that's a step in the right direction, you know, I mean.
How about that parking lot, is there any way we can make that work or?
Ross, did you hear Joe's question about the parking lot, the city parking lot downtown?
Uh, well, I, I heard part of it. Um, was it in regard to a community celebration?
Joe asked if the dugout could use the city parking lot by the sign because they have a caterer's license.
Cause there was-
They do have a caterer's license?
Yes, they do.
Yeah, there was conversation about needing to own the property or whatever in order to have it, and obviously the alleyway is not owned. Uh, but there's a public lot right on the corner, um, that could be properly used, I guess.
Well, okay, yeah, my understanding is a caterer's license allows you to operate in areas other than just your original licensed establishment. Um, but, uh, again, we've got this prohibition in our code against, uh, alcohol consumption on public property, which would include the parking lot. And, you know, the only, uh, immediate way around that would be to, you know, have a community event. Uh, and again, uh, you know, I guess it depends on how far the council wants to, you know, bend the rules, but there'd have to be at least some, you know, citywide participation in that. Um, you know, uh, well, you know, similar to Arla Dazzle. You know, Arla Dazzle is the, you know, that's, that, that's the example of the exception under Code Section eight point five. That is, you know, clearly a community-wide, uh, city-sponsored celebration. And, uh, you know, that, that changes the rules temporarily. Uh, now, how far can you stretch that? I don't know. Uh, but, um, you know, certainly if it was, uh, you know, a three-day or a five-day event, maybe that's not stretching it too far.
Actually, actually, Ross, Ross, uh, eight oh five states, the city council may at its own discretion make exceptions to this section for special events sponsored by community service organizations or a city celebration, a class reunion, a family reunion, a company party, or a special event group activity. It does not have to be a full-city event. It could be-
Well, yeah, those, those-
It, it, it could be Arlington liquor dates.
Those additional examples, those additional examples were specifically put in there to allow the use of the city park shelters.
That's not what the ordinance says though. That, that might have been, uh, that, that might have been the reason why it was put together, but that's not what it says.
Well, I'm not gonna debate, uh, legal theories with you, Matt. And, you know, I've discussed all of these issues with you very thoroughly last week, and I'm a little surprised you're bringing them all up again.
That's because I have a vested interest in getting our bars and restaurants open.
Yeah, well, I understand that, and, and I, I have the same interest. But it's my job as city attorney to advise the council on what's legal and what's not legal. And I'm not gonna start telling the council something's legal if I don't think it is, uh, just because there's, you know, some interest in doing something that's currently against our city ordinances.
So, was a resolution needed to make it only one reading?
Yes.
So, I'll make a motion to, uh,
Suspend the rules?
Suspend the rules, uh, to, uh, only one reading of the liquor license, uh.
Second.
Would that be, that would be for this ordinance only, is that correct? So, it doesn't, doesn't continue on that way?
Only, only this one-time deal, yeah.
Well, if I were to know that, why didn't we do that for the sex, the predator thing too?
Fast track that? I mean-
Was it printed, can we, okay, let's do this first.
Motion by Councilmember Morgan, second by Councilmember Batchery, to, um, approve a resolution to suspend the rules for ordinance number three twenty-nine, to make it take effect after first reading. Any other discussion?
You know, this isn't approving the resolution, it's just the motion to suspend, so we're not-
So we're not going to require the city to post an additional meeting or anything, so not taking any of that out. We are taking it out?
We're taking out the second reading. So after the first reading and it's published on Thursday.
Then it takes effect.
It takes effect.
But this is, and that's included, it's going to take effect.
Yeah, on Thursday.
Okay.
If we were to, yeah.
If we were to pass that ordinance.
Okay, the next resolution is to pass the ordinance, okay?
So the next one is?
Okay, okay.
Yeah, then we want to have another resolution. So that was thirty-one, left thirty-two.
Okay.
A resolution to pass this ordinance.
I'm going to find the resolution here so I can say what the number is.
Thirty-two.
Ross, I have a quick question. Matt had brought up a couple other things that he'd like to see in that resolution. Can we, or in the ordinance, can we change it tonight now and approve it?
At three twenty-nine.
Yes, uh, you know, that's the purpose of the readings, uh, you know, to make modifications based on the council's discussion.
Can somebody give Matt back in here? Matt Nelson?
Parking spaces, right?
Yeah, there's a couple of things.
Parking spaces.
Parking spaces directly in front of the businesses.
What changes did you have to the ordinance?
Changes you should just.
Street parking spots roped off?
Yep, yep, street parking on Second Avenue, uh, the four parking spots next to the Arlington House. Uh, the three parking spots out the side of, uh, Levita Restaurant on Third Avenue. And, um, Stu's was wondering if they could get two parking spots right in front of, of, of their establishment as well.
Can we just open it up to any of the parking spots within their business?
Frontage.
Right, like whatever their property line is of that business. Just say whichever parking spots you want to deem usable within that vicinity, right? You can't extend beyond your property. Can we just change it to something like that?
So, right, but I would add to that though, that their insurance would have to know that they're moving onto the street and that they're covered, right?
Yep.
That's, yeah, and I think, and I think that'll be.
We will let them be out there, but they're.
We'll allow it, but their dram shop will cover those liabilities in those cases.
So I like how you said the.
No matter what it is, you're going to get in, city of Arlington, if there's an accident, will be included in the lawsuit, that is a given.
But by that token, it's still on the business owners to responsibly serve that alcohol and that's their liability, so.
But that doesn't exempt us from lawsuits.
That's.
Okay, let's act on the first, uh, motion here.
We're not ready yet.
Yeah, man, okay.
You had also mentioned, Matt, that you wanted to include the city owned parking lot in this ordinance.
Uh, yes, I'd like the city to open up the city parking lot to a, just a, at least a central dining area for any establishment.
They could maybe divide it if they wanted to or whatever.
Sure, let the, let the business owners work that out.
Could we put in some roadblocks for the alleyway, like on the end? So like, does that need to be in the ordinance? I don't want a truck just barreling down.
No.
I don't think so, but I think.
You're saying on that south side there to just block it off from the alley.
I'm thinking on the alley.
I, 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 I do know with the alleyway and the only alley that we're really talking about is, is the dugout with Matt and Curry. And they went and talked to all of the residents on the south side of that alley. And made sure that everything was okay with them. So there shouldn't be a problem with the city putting barricades up.
Can they talk to the fire chief?
And I don't know.
Well, that would be an issue maybe with the fire chief. I'm just asking.
No, we're not talking to the fire chief.
They could be moved over.
My concern would be that John's asking the fire chief, would he have issues with that alley being blocked?
That's why I don't think you necessarily block the alley. I think you just stick them along that south side of the lot there. So you still leave a lane for the alley, but you have the parking lot blocked off.
I would assume that the fire chief's going to have a problem with them.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay, we do have a motion on table to suspend the rules. That is what we are talking about, suspending the rules and have, have the ordinance take effect after this, the first reading. There will be some changes made in it and we'll get to that when we actually act on the ordinance itself. So this motion is then by Morgan, council member Batchor seconded it. And that is to suspend the rules to allow for one reading only for ordinance number three twenty-nine to take effect. Is there any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no.
We have to do a roll call.
We have to do a roll call. Oh, that's right, this is a resolution. You are right. Uh, council member Batchor?
Yes.
Council member Morgan?
Yes.
Council member Hattelstad?
Yes.
Council member Amrain?
Yes.
Four in favor, none opposed, one absent. The resolution to suspend the rules is adopted. Now, getting into the ordinance itself, that would be, uh, resolution thirty-two dash twenty twenty. And that would be to act on the ordinance with the changes that are being mentioned or have been mentioned. And I'm going to ask city administrator Newsom to mention those or to read those when she is ready.
Changes I have from the ordinance are to open up the parking spots in front of the business. And to open up the city owned parking lot for a central dining area.
Okay. And then also.
And alcohol.
That was up to the city.
Yeah.
Yes or no to alcohol?
The dugout to ask him for alcohol.
Yeah.
With alcohol, alcohol being served at the city parking lot.
So this is what they're takeout, I'm assuming? Or is this under someone's actual license that's serving?
It would have to be in Matt's caterer's license. If he's serving alcohol, would that be?
So there, in other words, there would have to be, there would not have to be food served. Somebody couldn't go out there and order.
A beer.
A beer.
Well, I think the initial intent was so that people could grab their food and then go and eat their food there. And if we're throwing alcohol in the mix, that's a, that's a different, uh, ball of wax.
Leave alcohol out?
Yeah, Matt said he's okay with leaving the alcohol out there, but that was, that was the original attempt.
Mm-hmm. And then also on page two, uh, we had, towards the bottom, it says, passed by city council Arlington, Minnesota, that gets scratched. That gets scratched. That did not, that sentence did not have to be there. Okay. The changes in the ordinance as previously read have been read. Do you understand what those are now? Cause this will become effective as soon as it's published on Thursday. Okay? Uh, would someone like to introduce ordinance number three twenty-nine for passage?
So all the stuff about, uh, being able to basically go back the way it was. So say, three weeks from now, businesses as usual, um, we basically revoke this thing. And then they go back to their normal.
Yes, cause it hasn't ended on it or.
Or seventy-five percent capacity.
Seventy-five percent capacity or October fifteen, twenty twenty.
Whichever comes first.
Yep.
So this is all temporary until those two things.
I'll, I'll introduce ordinance, uh, twenty, uh, thirty-two, three two nine.
Thirty-two dash twenty twenty.
Thirty-two dash twenty twenty with the additions that, um, we wrote down and made.
Second.
Resolution is introduced by council member Batchor, second by council member Morgan. And it is a resolution, ordinance, resi- I'm sorry, a resolution approving ordinance three twenty-nine with the changes that were mentioned this evening. This ordinance would be approved, uh, after the first reading.
And the publication.
And publication in the paper on, what's the date?
Thursday.
Thursday, June fourth?
June fourth.
June fourth. Okay, any questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call. Council member Amrain?
Yes.
Council member Morgan?
Yes.
Council member Batchor?
Yes.
Council member Hattelstad?
Yes.
Four in favor, none opposed, one absent. The resolution and ordinance is adopted.
Mr. Mayor, Amy, counsel, we'd like to thank you, thank you much.
All right.
So I have a question. If we were to do like some sort of emerg- like some sort of, um, COVID days or something like that for the next couple of days until Thursday, to give them the opportunity to open, can we do that? How do you guys feel about that?
I like it.
How do you guys feel about that?
I didn't hear it sold.
I asked if we did some kind of COVID days or some kind of tour of businesses over the next couple of days. Or do you not have supplies or anything ready anyhow?
We'd be a scramble, we won't get things ready by Wednesday.
And really the word wouldn't get out until sometime tomorrow.
It would get out fast.
Word get, it'd get out.
There's other people listening right now.
Right.
Well, if they can pass, I agree, if we're not ready, we're not ready. Other places, it's not just the law.
Stu's ready now.
And I mean, that's my theory too. If, if we do that, they'll work to get ready. It's a matter of whoever's going to be first and foremost, I guess, so.
Well, yeah, I'm not specifically asking you, Matt, there's other ones out there.
Stu's is ready now. Tomorrow.
You guys are ready to do it?
Yeah, Larry Kaker's ready tomorrow.
And, and I know I had talked to Denise too, and she, she didn't really have a plan yet for the Arlington House. But kind of that same approach of if it's made available to you, then you figure the logistics and run with it if you want. But at least the opportunity is there for them.
I would, I'd like to make a motion that we, um, uh, sponsor, have, um, the chamber potentially sponsor, um, uh, some type of Arlington COVID days for the next few days until this ordinance takes, uh, effect. Uh, to go along with the ordinance that we just passed.
Does that need a second?
So that's a resolution.
Is there somebody to second?
Yeah.
That's a resolution.
Yeah, I'll second that, yep.
That's a resolution, also?
Correct.
Is that something we got to throw some picnic tables on? So that.
Well, the chamber.
Let us know what you need, Matt.
Have the chamber taken care of.
Yeah, let, yep, let them, let the chamber in.
Call it the resolution for chamber COVID days.
Chamber COVID days.
I saw a lot of this. Minnesota league, even the city here says that you can specify within the ordinance that it can be active before publication. Unless otherwise specified within the ordinance. So effective date on the league of Minnesota cities here. States that unless otherwise specified within the ordinance, an ordinance becomes effective after its publication in the official newspaper. So unless specified in the ordinance, so if you specify that this ordinance becomes effective immediately, publication doesn't have to be done then in order for it.
Well, it still has to be done.
Right, it has to be done, but the ordinance can take effect immediately according to the league of Minnesota cities.
Well, I think we just.
I should ask Ross.
But I think we just null, made that null and void with our special days here of opening up.
Yeah, COVID days.
I mean, it's good to know for future reference, obviously, but. But with this.
In effect, it puts the ordinance in effect.
We don't have alcohol.
No.
Yeah.
Are we okay to have tables on the side of?
Once we vote on it.
Well, not quite yet, we have to go down this motion.
All right. Motion by council member Batchor, second by council member Amrain to, uh, declare Tuesday, June second through Thursday, June fourth as chamber, Arlington Chamber COVID days.
Can we get it on the monitor out front too?
Oh, on the city side?
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call, this is a resolution again. Council member Hattelstad?
Um, in good conscience and ethics, I can't vote for this, no.
Okay.
Eventing up rules.
Council member Morgan?
Yes.
Council member Batchor?
Yes.
Council member Amrain?
Yes.
Three votes in favor, one vote against, one absent. The resolution is adopted. All right. That brings us to item eleven. Uh, resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty, resolution approving the terms of a loan under the signed loan program for the Arlington Animal Clinic.
That was when the EDA approved this loan right into the Arlington Animal Clinic. A thousand dollars for them to replace the signage on the front of the building. And I believe they also put a sign on the side of the building. And the bill was over three thousand dollars. So we're only putting about, I think it was about thirty-five hundred dollars wrong, put a thousand towards it. And that's from our EDA account.
Good.
I'll introduce resolution twenty-seven twenty twenty, approving the terms of a loan under the signed loan program to Arlington Animal Clinic located at four oh two West Allen Street.
Second?
Second.
Motion, uh, by Bat- council member Batchor, second by council member Amrain to approve resolution or introduce, I should say, resolution twenty-seven dash twenty twenty, approving the terms of a loan under the signed loan program of the EDA uh, for the Arlington Animal Clinic located at four oh two West Main Street. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by, by roll call, council member Amrain?
Yes.
Council member Morgan?
Yes.
Council member Hattelstad?
Yes.
Council member Batchor?
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent. The resolution is adopted. Item twelve, resolution twenty-eight dash twenty twenty, resolution appointing judges for the twenty twenty election.
I'll introduce resolution twenty-eight twenty twenty.
Second.
Resolution twenty-eight dash twenty twenty, a resolution appointing judges for the twenty twenty elections, plural, elections. Uh, introduced by council member Morgan, second by council member Batchor. Any discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, council member Amrain?
Yes.
Council member Batchor?
Yes.
Council member Hattelstad?
Yes.
Council member Morgan?
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent, the resolution is adopted. Resolution twenty-nine dash twenty twenty, a resolution pro- pro- yeah, prorating twenty twenty liquor licenses for the city of Arlington to reflect the period of closure due to Minne- Minnesota State Executive Order twenty twenty and subsequent orders.
I'll introduce resolution twenty-nine twenty twenty.
Second.
Resolution twenty-nine dash twenty twenty, introduced by council member Morgan, second by council member Batchor. This is a resolution prorating twenty twenty liquor licenses for the city of Arlington to reflect the period of closure due to the Minnesota State Executive Order twenty twenty and subsequent orders. My understanding is this creates a credit on their next liquor license, is that right?
Correct, it would apply to the twenty twenty renewal.
Renewal, okay.
Yep, so when they renew.
Okay. Okay, any other questions on the resolution? Hearing none, vote by roll call, council member Morgan?
Yes.
Council member Hattelstad?
Yes.
Council member Batchor?
Yes.
Council member Am- Amrain?
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent. The resolution is adopted. Resolution thirty dash twenty twenty, a resolution adopting an ordinance establishing restrictions on the residency of predatory offenders within city limits. This is one where the second, for the first reading took place at the last council meeting. Second reading took place at this council meeting.
So, here's my question for Ross. Ross, can we change the date in the ordinance saying that it's effective immediately before publication? There, that was mentioned that, that's in the league of Minnesota cities, has something like that mentioned?
It's only two days.
I, I heard my name, I didn't hear the rest of that.
All before that is.
Ross, Michelle is asking if we can make the predatory offender ordinance effective immediately.
immediately, is that what you want?
Before publication.
Immediately before the publication in the newspaper on Thursday.
Uh, no, my understanding is publication is the required last step.
The way I understand it.
So this one would become effective, uh, Thursday?
And this is ordinance number...
Number thirty dash twenty-twenty.
Second.
Who was that, Joe? Resolution thirty dash twenty-twenty, introduced by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Morgan, and it is a resolution adopting an ordinance establishing restrictions on the resident, residency of predatory offenders within city limits. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, vote by roll call, Councilmember Batchor?
Yes.
Councilmember Amrain?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattlestead?
Yes.
Four votes in favor, none opposed, one absent, the resolution is adopted. Resolution thirty-one dash twenty-twenty has been taken care of, resolution thirty-two dash twenty-twenty has been taken care of previously. We will go to then item fourteen, a recommendation from the council to fill seat left vacant by Councilmember Hattlestead's resignation.
Ross, I have a quick question for you about, about filling the, the vacant seat. Laura Gilman did email me her choice number one and choice number two with her reasons. Can council take that into account? Does her vote count?
Her vote wouldn't.
Uh, no, uh, she, she has to be present either physically or, you know, by a previously arranged, uh, you know, televised, uh, uh, appearance, uh, uh, you know, a written, written vote, uh, isn't allowed, so...
Can I share her input?
What if, uh, what if we choose to take it?
Her input, her input could be shared with the rest of the council. I don't know any reason why that can't be done, but, uh, it, it can't be considered her vote.
Okay.
Okay.
I will read, I will read what Laura sent me then. My number one choice for Tom's replacement is Galen, based on his experience and history of service to this community. My number two choice is Matt, based on his community service.
Good. Open for discussion.
How are we going to go about this process?
Maybe.
Are we just gonna...
Name your person, or what would you?
What's our process?
How do you want to do it?
Oh, yeah.
Each of you want to share your feelings about the members, and then someone make a motion and go with that? But let's, I guess we need some input first.
We're going to list our one and two?
Certainly can, that can be it.
Laura gave her one and two and the reasons.
One and two or just one? What do we need, two?
We do, we need one.
Well...
But you don't know who's...
Yeah, so there's four, there's five of us technically, and, I mean, my one and two are very close together, and I could see either way, so, um, I'm somewhat flexible between the two of them, based on others' feelings.
But we are only filling one position?
Yes.
Just to review, this position would take effect no later than July first?
June fifteenth is my last meeting once, when I was...
June fifteenth, okay, June fifteenth, and would go to the end of the year, that term, an expired term would expire at the end of the year. Uh, come August, uh, the expiring terms, the, those terms that are expiring will come up for, um, filing, the filing will open in August sometime, for those that want to be put on the ballot in November to fill those expiring terms. So with that in mind, uh, we can, we got, uh, Councilmember Gilman's input, would some, someone else like to share their input?
Um, I, I thought Matt did a really great job at the interview, his heart's there, he's local, he, um, has spent a lot of, um, time and, uh, in the community, really like him, and I also love Craig, he was new and fresh, um, sounded like he had a good level, head on his shoulders, a lot of experience in a lot of different areas, which I think would probably bring a, something unique to the council that I don't think we have, his A experiences, his different, uh...
I'm sorry, I missed your, who was your second, try it?
Craig.
Okay. Good.
And no particular one, I like them both.
Joe, do you want to tell us yours?
Um, scoring wise, uh, I had Peter as, uh, number one, and I had Matt as, uh, number two, um, that's scoring wise. I, I do, uh, I like the idea of, uh, giving it to Matt, as he was the, he was the previous one who had applied as well, um... Yes, so if I, you know, again, really, they were very, very similar, and I'm flexible, depending on whatever, I guess we'll see how it goes.
I would agree with Joe a hundred percent, and I don't have a one or two, I would go with Matt or Peter, and I am very flat, I could go either way.
By the numbers, it was Peter one, Matt two, um... I do like Matt's persistence. Um, but yeah, it was a very close, close calculation between the two.
Well, Matt's got votes from everybody.
Yep.
He's the only one who has votes from everybody.
Yep, he keeps coming back.
He's paid his due.
He has been, I believe, on the ambulance service, numerous other committees, the guy has been involved with the city, and he wants to be on the city council, he's proven that. I guess that's my view.
I guess I would...
Someone on mic, Mark?
I, I would make a motion to, um, to ask Matt Sharpie if he would be willing to, uh, join the council to replace, um, Matt Sharpie.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Batchor, second by Councilmember Morgan, to, um, offer the vacancy on the council, uh, to Matt Sharpie.